Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, June the 13th, 2023 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're glad to have you all with us in person, or if you're watching online, welcome. At this time, I'd like to mention the loss of someone that was just a dear friend to me and so many of us on Commissioners' Court and to Denton County as a whole. We lost Kay Copeland last week. She passed away and we were at, Lynn and I were at her service yesterday, and I just think it'd be appropriate as we do our invocation this morning, we take a little moment of silence right before that in honor of Kay's great legacy to the city of Denton and Denton County as a whole. You know, Kay grew up here in Denton and went to Denton High School and later U N T and spent a very long career down at Dallas County, working at Dallas County for Commissioner Jim Jackson. And she was truly one of the most patriotic people I knew, and she, not only did she vote every time, but she also encouraged others to be involved in the process and loved to be involved in campaigns of candidates she supported. When Kay supported you, she, she supported you in every which way. And so I just, it's a great loss to this Commissioners' Court, you know. Commissioner Mitchell and I were talking just a moment ago how Kay served on so many committees for us over the years. The Commissioners' Court, you know, is on our redistricting committee, and we appointed her chairman of that committee, and she did such a great job. And I always remember dropping off all these maps to her house. And when she was chairman, she got on the committee and she said, I want to look, I like hard copies, I want to look everything over. And I said, absolutely. And so I dropped them all off at her house, and she called me about two days later and said, okay, I can't make heads or tails of where all these boundaries are. She said, because the county's grown up so much. She said, will you come drive me around all the Commissioner boundaries so I can get a good handle on how the growth patterns and everything have gone? I said, absolutely. And those were fun couple of days in the car, driving Kay around the county. And I say that because she took things seriously. She really wanted to, she just didn't want to look abstract at numbers and maps. She really wanted to go out and look things over and get a real good handle on it. It was detail oriented and anyway, she was just a, you know, her family owned the Denton Record Chronicle, and she was civically active. I think that's where some of that civic activism was founded early on in her life. So anyway, she was just a, she was a great person, very charitable of spirit. And as Christmas rolls around each year, we will have her, she loved to have a big Christmas party every year on a Sunday afternoon in December, open for so many people. It was a great tradition. She did it for many, many decades, and she was kind enough and generous enough to donate to Denton County, to our museums, a large Santa Claus collection that we have. And so Lynn and I were talking about that yesterday, how we need to have some of those displayed in this courthouse at Christmas, not only over at the courthouse on the square. So she gave us other items that are in the Bayless Selby House and just a really neat lady. I was blessed and fortunate to know Kay Copeland, and we need more Kay Copelands in the world. Commissioner Edmondson.
Thank you. You know, you mentioned that Kay's family owned the Denton Record Chronicle. That made her the ideal proofreader. And so whenever it was time for ballot proofing, you know, when we were using our paper ballots, and Kay was the one we always called to come in and prove that ballot. And I'll never forget, she was the one who corrected Robert Ramirez's name every time on the ballot, because it was easy to get that one wrong. So she was a great lady, and we will miss her.
Yeah, she was a great person and a very faithful person. All right. So Marta, if you will come forward, please, if we'll have a little moment of silence for in memory and honor of Kay Copeland. And then we will have our pledges followed up by Commissioner Kevin Falconerfield. Please stand.
Lord, we thank you for Kay Copeland. We thank you that she has set an example for what it means to serve as well as put feet to her faith. So we thank you for her example, and we want to be that kind of community that we see people of this caliber who devoted themselves to this county and the broadening and the development of this county. So we just honor her today in Jesus's name. I'm going to read a passage from Ephesians 1, which is Paul's prayer for the community that he served. "We have heard of your faith in the Lord Jesus that is present in this community and of your great love for all of God's people here in Denton County. We haven't stopped thanking Him for you. We are continually speaking to Him on your behalf in our prayers, and here is what we say. God of our Lord Jesus, the Anointed Father of glory, we call out to you on behalf of your people in Denton County. Give them minds ready to receive wisdom and revelation so that they will truly know you. Open the eyes of their hearts and let the light of your truth flood in. Shine your light on the hope that you are calling them to embrace. Reveal to them the glorious riches you are preparing as their inheritance. Let them see the full extent of your power that is at work in those of us who believe, and may it be done according to your might and to your power." Ephesians 1:15 through 19. Father, we thank you for this word today. We ask that you give us more so that our community can grow with your power, your wisdom, your light, and your love in Jesus's name.
Amen. Thank you, Marta.
Thank you, Marta. If you will, please join me in the pledge to our wonderful country.
I pledge allegiance to the bond of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one justice for all.
And to our state.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Marta. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go to item one, which is for public input for items that are not listed on the agenda. And we do have two members of the public who have registered for comment. Our first one is Ms. Diane Beck. Good morning, Ms. Beck.
Good morning, Judge Eads. How are you?
Good, good to see you. And I would just remind you and our next speaker, Mr. Thrasher, that public comments are limited to three minutes, and I'll go ahead and set the timer, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Judge Eads.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Judge Eads and commissioners. My name is Diane Beck, and I reside at 2421 Mercedes Road in Denton. And I'm here today to talk about the fact that I feel I've been targeted because I'm a conservative in this town, and it tends to be a more liberal town. It's just an observed thing, and especially since I was fired from Span on January 23rd by text message by Michelle McMahon. And I know you support her, which is a good organization, but they do help seniors, and they're not helping me. They are, I believe, attacking my civil liberties and my rights as a civil person. And Bobby, you're a person of color, you probably see that happening more throughout when you were younger. But yes, I do believe that my civil liberties are at jeopardy. They are denying my unemployment, which really, I believe, is unconstitutional. They have trumped up stories, really literally, that people who know me would not believe the stories they've made up to deny my unemployment. And I am fighting, and I'm still in the appeal process. And that is mostly being manufactured stories by Michelle McMahon, Glenn Kimball, and Julie Hydock, all of Span, and the board is Glenn Kimball. And then I also sent a certified letter to M H M R and the police department trying to set the record straight, because people, mostly my husband, who happens to be a narcissist, has gotten the rhetoric against me. So I sent the certified letter, never heard back yet. That was sent out Thursday before the holiday, and I know they all got it by the 30th of May. I asked for either a call, which I've been calling people, and no one responds, or a written letter by the chief. It was sent to Chief Shoemaker and Pam Gutierrez at the CEO of M H M R. And I feel it was a well-written letter, and I also feel it's like the soup Nazi, no soup for you, no service for you, Diane Beck. And also, I, I think we should put, I know this, this is due for jail reform. The jail is absolutely terrible. I spent 26 days. I also complained of malnutrition and dehydration, and nothing, nothing was done. Literally, they barely, it took them like 15, 20 days almost to do a chest x-ray, which I had told them, I can't do a P P D, I need a chest x-ray. It took them like 20 days, just really bad. And I really do feel that we should put on the agenda jail reform. I could maybe follow up with someone, or if someone can follow up. I do also appeal to the court because I do need one honest person in town. I have not really found many honest people, and Ryan, I think you're my commissioner. I was hoping that maybe you could help me advocate for justice. But whatever happens, I just hope, and Bobby, just so you know, I have video recorded everything, because Bobby doctored my presentation in front of the other city council. All right, thank you.
Perfect, good, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Someone did. I'm not saying Bobby, someone, someone named Bobby did. All right, call me.
Thank you. All right, next is Mr. Thrasher. I don't have a first name on here. Oh, is it Brandon Thrasher? Yes, sir. Mr. Thrasher, I'll remind you that public comments are limited to three minutes, okay? If you'll come forward. Good morning, glad to have you. Go right ahead.
My Brandon K. Thrasher come forth today to address very serious public corruption by numerous Denton County officials that were or are currently holding public office here. Also, I'm here, also, I'm here to tell you about serious police misconduct, numerous illegal activities that a certain local police department has been engaging in for years against me, Brandon Thrasher. This illegal activity has gone on for five-plus years now. I have tried to do everything in my own power to have this corruption and illegal criminal activities to stop, but it has not. For the most part, the main source of the misconduct is directly from the North Lake, Texas Police Department. They are guilty of illegal spying, electronic surveillance abuse here in precinct four, Denton County, Texas, also putting me under an illegal law enforcement criminal investigation, and keeps getting unwarranted county judges' signatures, sign-offs on warrants to continue their illegal ways and activities and dealings with me. All these surveillance and other warrants they keep presenting to their superior should have been turned away and clearly denied. But instead, the Denton County judge has decided to support illegal and criminal activities by local law enforcement and continues to illegally sign off on these useless and ridiculous warrants. My apartment in North Lake, Texas, which was rented about approximately five years ago, was placed under an unreasonable search and seizure by the chief of police. He personally bribed our apartment management personnel and had them place illegal spyware all inside our unit and our personal belongings, including clothes, furniture, et cetera. Also, our personal automobiles were bugged. My cell phones in the past five years have all been illegally wiretapped by these corrupt North Lake Police Department officers. They are not only listening to all my inbound and outbound calls, but tracking all my online and internet activities. These corrupt and dirty cops are bribing numerous people out in this community to get and receive their personal financial and other gains. They have been extorting me personally and blackmailing me as well. They have been illegally making a family member of mine pay off their dirty and sneaky demands, and this has gone on for years as well. And recently, they have started to try personally harm me, physically harm me, by having restaurants that I dine at frequently taint and poison my food.
Mr. Thrasher, your time is, your three minutes is up, but thank you.
I'd like to finish. It's just another.
No, your time is denied. Thank you.
I'd like to finish.
Your time is denied, sir. Thank you.
Then I'll submit it to the court in writing.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I would like to remind, I know we have lots of employees watching our meetings, and I'd like to remind you all that we do have a blood drive that's going on today from 9:30 to 2:30 off the law enforcement center and also here at the administrative courthouse from 10:00 to 3:00. And walk-ins are welcomes. We'd love to have you come over and participate, and that's being coordinated by our wonderful Denton County Human Resource Department. So if you have time in your schedule today, please come over, and we'd love to have you here and to participate in our blood drive. Well, next, let's go to item 3A. 3A is a presentation of the Excellence in Safety Award from the Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool, the TAC RPM, to Denton County for its record of excellence in safety in the workplace. And at this time, I'd like to hand this off to Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioner, good morning. We have Isaac Garcia with the Texas Association of Counties. He's going to present the safety award that Denton County received back in March. This is a 2022 safety award that we received back in March of 2023. But before I pass it to him, I just want to thank the court, because without your support, we couldn't do this, right? Additionally, to the court's support, we want to thank the Sheriff Department, especially the Sheriff Department, because we meet with them on a quarterly basis to go with all the claims that they are having. We try to work with them on improving those issues that may be present at the jail or whatever is happening at the sheriff's office. That is one of the things that we do very often with the Sheriff Department, to meet, come out with solutions, and try to find the well-being for the employees. In addition to that, Rodham Bridge is one of the departments that, when I came to work for the county back in many years ago, we used to have many, many claims from Rodham Bridge. There were very expensive claims, and they have come a long way since then. That's a department that now is, the minority on claims, very few, not very expensive, but they are always with safety in their heads. And it's, it's just a pleasure to be working with them. I have Tony here, Tony Luton, who is in charge of doing this work now. And we have Dina. Dina is the person that basically keep us in shape. We, we, she's the first contact that everybody has with the HR office. She tell us everything is happening, and she correct me every time I'm making a mistake. So I always acknowledge all the department head, elected officials for this, but today is the day that I need to mention my office, because they, they actually are the ones doing the job. So I want to thank everybody for that, and I'm going to pass it to Isaac and I think that Tony wants to talk to. Thank you.
Thank you, Gustavo.
Morning, Judge. Morning, commissioners.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate being here. You know, this is one of the counties I'm always happy to visit, because everybody welcomes us with open arms, and we really appreciate all the work you all do. You know, clockwork and culture are two, two things that I think about when I come to Denton County. Clockwork, because Tony and I were just having a conversation earlier, and I've been with the association now for about 10 years. And ever since I've been here, Denton County has received an Excellence in Safety Award for those past 10 years. And to give you an idea as far as how these awards go, we have two tiers of awards. We have a, we have an Excellence in Safety Award, and we have a Safety Achievement Award. The Excellence the Excellence being the higher of the two. Roughly about 10% of counties get the Safety Achievement Award, just the basic entry-level award, 10% of the 254 counties in the state. As far as the Excellence Award, less than 4% of the counties in the state are able to submit and get the criteria necessary for that Excellence Award. So Denton County is doing leaps and bounds, and it just comes in like clockwork. As far as culture goes, you know, one of the issues and one of the difficult things about working in county government is every few election cycles, we have a whole new representative. Commissioners change, judges change, sheriffs change, constables change, everybody in the county swaps out. And it's difficult to keep a safety culture like that going. But Denton County through the years has managed to do that. And I say "safety culture" because it's something that's not only present in the HR department, but it's present in Commissioners Court, it's present in the Sheriff's Office. And it's something that everybody in the county plays a part. And that's why this is an award that we present to the entire county. It's not just Rodham Bridge, it's not just the Sheriff's Office, it's not just HR. It's everybody in the county, and everybody in the county contributes to that. So we really appreciate all the work you do, especially all the people behind the scenes like Tony and Diana and Gustavo, who put in some of the legwork to get the county on board with this. But with your culture, I do feel like this is an award that the county will continue to receive, and it's definitely an award that I'd like to see the county receiving as far as I'm here and hopefully way past my tenure. So congratulations. Tony, did you want to come up and say something?
I actually had a little speech prepared, but Gustavo said everything that I was about to say. So.
Next year, I'll call on you first.
Please.
We're going to win it next year, so.
This really is a partnership award. Like you said, working with the Sheriff's Office, Tina, and transportation engineering, really making safety a priority as while we're here today. And like you mentioned, I can't do any of this without Dina. Every single of her worker comp claims touch her desk before they get to anybody else. So couldn't do this without her, and it really is a partnership. So I'm glad to be here and hope we'll be here next year, receiving this award as well.
Perfect, all right. We'll come down and take, do you have any other closing comments? We'll do a picture, we'll do a picture. I want to, on behalf of the course, I want to commend our HR department for its leadership and communicating the importance of safety. And it's a value that the Commissioners Court all agrees with. And I want to thank all of our almost 2,000 employees across the county for maintaining that and adopting that culture of safety. I think it's very, very, it's very important. Not only does it save life and limb and property, but it also saves their tax dollars, which is also very, very important as well. So I just wanted to thank everyone for being involved and displaying a great culture of safety. Did y'all want to say anything? Well, let's take a picture, and thank you, Dina, for all your efforts. I've known Dina since first grade. We go way back. Yes! Not many. Not that they're still friends.
Yeah, that's right. Still talking to each other.
Okay. Let's see what we, anything else on the order here? Need to get anybody out of here. All right, let's go back, members. We'll go back in order, let's go to item two. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda or have a motion to approve it as presented?
Move to approve.
Second, a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda debate consists of item 2A, which is approval of order-making appointments and inappropriate action. Item 2B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item 2C is approval of budgetman request 101460 for the facilities management department to transfer $1,356 from maintenance management to Loop 288 Administrative Courthouse Maintenance Management to cover the cost of elevator service maintenance for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item 2D, approval of budgetman request 101470 for the facilities management department to transfer $34,561 from miscellaneous county building maintenance to the janitorial service line item and various building budgets. Funding is needed for the renewal of the janitorial contract and any appropriate action. Item 2E is approval of budgetman request 101480 for the Public Health Department to transfer $6,000 from vaccines to administrative supplies to cover the cost increase of a contract for various language translation services. Item 2E, that was, that was, item 2F is a budgetman request 101490 for the criminal district attorney to transfer $4,000 from administrative supplies to contract labor funding to be utilized to cover the cost of a temporary employee and any appropriate action. And item 2G is the road superintendent report for the month of May 2023. And this is for recording purposes only. Next, let's go to our auditor. Under 5A approval, the bill report payments from CSUD, Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, Interest, and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Yes, sir?
There are no additions or deletions this week. Recommend to approve as presented.
Perfect, all right. Do we have a motion to approve as presented? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6A, approval of renewal of bid number 202591, tree lighting and annual maintenance or decor IQ.
Need approval?
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6B, approval of specifications of authority to advertise for ITB 23-2764, exterior painting, historical park, African-American museum, and any appropriate action. Chair, move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6C, approval of specifications for RFPQ 23-2744, surveying services and appointment evaluation committee to include Noe Rodriguez, administrative foreman, transportation engineer Chuck Feigs, lead project coordinator, transportation engineer Chris Lansy, construction coordinator for construction management.
Need approval?
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6D, approval of award of bid 22-2736. This is for Flex Base Grade 1 Taipei to Denton Trucking Company. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6E, approval award of RFP 23-2739 Mowing and Landscape into Quali Care Landscape Services Incorporated in amount of $423,661 and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6F, this is approval of award of RFP 23-2743. This is the Woods House Exhibit Room, designed to the Toxie-McMillan Design Associate LLC and any appropriate action. Chair, move for approval. Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6G, approval award of RFP 23-2738 Denton County Records Preservation and Restoration to Cofile Technology Incorporated and any appropriate action. I do believe that Commissioner Falconer has a comment.
Yeah, Judge, if we could, I'd like to make a motion to table this. I've talked with Scott Arledge a little bit about, it's a big contract, and I just think that it might be worth taking you a couple of days to review that before we make that.
Well, second. Okay, so we will, we have a motion and a second. By Commissioner Falconer and Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6H, approval of evaluation committee's recommendation to rank Binkley and Barfield Incorporated as the most qualified firm for RF SQ Denton County Fiber Project and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7A, approval of budgetman request 101510 to transfer $851,786 within the 2013 PI Bonds Trip 08 Roads with $553,661 being transferred from Bonnie Bray Vintage to Discretionary Funds Precinct 2 and $298,125 to Discretionary Funds Precinct 4 to allocate the remaining project balance after the completion of the Bonnie Bray Vintage Road project. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7B, approval of budgetman request 101520 for technology services to transfer $3,977 from information security technology software services and $150,000 from consultant fees to public safety courts technology capital and transfer $1,680 from public safety courts technology software services to countywide technology wireless services for a total amendment amount of $155,657 to purchase equipment to provide a resilient and redundant internet connection for the new Mark 43 public safety system. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7C, approval of budgetman request 101530 for the Sheriff's Office to increase revenue and for insurance reimbursement for $7,341 and transfer $2,546 from county vehicles unappropriated contingency for a total of $9,887 to be allocated to Sheriff's Administration, vehicle care to allocate funds received from the insurance company and to transfer additional funds to cover the total cost of repairs for the vehicle and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 8A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, we have one demotion in console precinct 2, one promotion in the county clerk, one new hire in the district attorney's office, two new hires in juvenile probation, two new hires in the sheriff's office, one rehire in the sheriff's office, and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Thank you, Gustavo. That is presented for recording purposes only. Next is 9A, an approval of a renewal award contract. This is HHS 00131570017 between the Texas Department of State Health Services Dishes in Denton County for fiscal year 2024, 2025 for infectious disease control unit surveillance and epidemiology activities grant in amount of $313,322. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 9B, approval of the local public health services LBHS RLSS grant agreement, contract number HHS 000077800018 for fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $97,596.
Need approval?
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 10A, approval of the final plat for McFarlane Edition. This is the final plat, lots 1 and 2, block 8. This is 14.365 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 1.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 10B, approval of the Sutton Edition Final Plat. This is lot 2, block 8. This is 2.390 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 1.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner, I mean, motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 12A, this is approval of the 2023-2024 interlocal agreements for shared governance, communication, and dispatch services system between Denton County and the North Lake Police Department. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13A, approval of United Way of Denton County Incorporated funding request to fulfill the allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19 and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14A, this is approval of a supplemental agreement, number 6, to the contract for engineering service between Denton County, Texas and Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated for the US 377 project from south of FM 1171 to north of Crawford Road in the amount of $265,885 for a total revised contract amount of $10,017,844 with funding in the amount of $200,876 to come from Precinct 4 Discretionary. This is a Trip 08 PI Bond Funds Order Line item 8174509030 to be transferred to the US 377 Order Line item 8174099030 and funding in the amount of $65,009 to come from Precinct 4 Discretionary. This is a Trip 08 PI Bond Funds Order Line item 6175409060 to be transferred to US 377 Order Line item 6174099060. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, the chair will second. You know, I'm glad we're continuing the good work on 377. All right, we've been doing that for years. We have a motion and a second, any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14B, approval of supplemental agreement, number 2, to the contract for engineering services between Denton County, Texas and Half Associates Incorporated for the Shady Shores Road project from Swisher Road to West Shady Shores Road in the amount of $3,442,325 for a total revised contract amount of $4,179,879 with funding in the amount of $662,446 to come from deferred revenue. Order line item 012303, funding in the amount of $668,438 to come from the Shady Shores Road Trip 08. Order line item 7174449070, funding in the amount of $841,562 to come from Shady Shores Road Trip 08. Order line item 8174449030, funding in the amount of $500,000 to come from Shady Shores Road Trip 08. Order line item 6874449030, funding in the amount of $20,000 to come from the Shady Shores Road Trip 08. Order line item 8374449010, and funding in the amount of $779,879 to come from Shady Shores Road Trip 22. Order line item 8974449020, and any appropriate action. This is Commissioner Precinct 1, Commissioner Precinct 2, and Commissioner Precinct 3.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? Well, there's lots of line items in there for pulling all the different.
Can you read that again?
No, I will not, thank you. Pulling all those, all those different line items together to get the project going. I know we have Commissioner Carter here. Thank you, sir, for being here on behalf of Half. We have a motion and a second, any other comments? This is a great project, I'm glad we're getting this done. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's good to have Ashley back with us today. I'm glad to, glad to see your smiling face. And next is 14C, approval of amendment number 1 to the user license agreement for an online vital records request application between Denton County, Texas and Permition LLC for online vital records request, identity verification, and payment processing services and any appropriate action.
Need approval?
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14D, approval of the amendment to software as a service agreement between Tyler Technologies Incorporated in Denton County for intergov as recommended by Steven Belnap, the Director of Development Services. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item 17, this is community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct 1.
Thank you, Judge. I just want to congratulate Flower Mound for the.
Thank you, Judge. I just want to congratulate Flower Mound for their state title this year in baseball. It's a huge accomplishment, so congratulations to them. That's it for me, Judge.
That's great for Flower Mound. Commissioner Falconer?
Uh, yes, just a couple items. In the Colony, fun in the sun, Dean O'Day, June 13th at Grandscape, 10 a.m. Juneteenth celebration on June 18th from 69 Grandscape. And then in Carrollton, it's a seed swap on June 17th, two, two o'clock at the Josie Ranch Lake Library. Paws on the Square on the 17th as well, 11 a.m. in downtown Carrollton. Crossroads is having their summer market on the 17th at 8 a.m. And Frisco is having their music in the chamber and that's on June 16th at Council Chambers at eight, eight o'clock. And that is all I have.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, I have a few, Judge, and I have some comments.
Ms. Mitchell? Commissioner?
It keeps going off. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Flower Mound Market continues every Sunday, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. June 18th, Cinco Sale Regata on Jerome Road at the CAC in Lake Dallas. We have Lake City Straight Day and Farmers Market. And in Louisville, that's on the 17th, in Louisville, Wild at Layla Day Camp during the month of June. Also, on last week, on Thursday, we celebrated the 70th year anniversary for the United Way. And I just want to make up a few comments about how United Way has partnered with the county, especially during the pandemic, helping keep families in food and in home. And also they assisted when we did the mental health navigators. With times like these, it is so nice to have partnership like the United Way and all of our nonprofits to help. So I would just want to thank Gary and his team, the staff members, the nonprofits, and Denton County, Don Cobb, Judge, Commissioners for all that they do to keep this going. And I have, this is not a brag, this is not for me, but I did receive award last, I mean, last Tuesday, but this award was not about me. It was about R.L. Crawford's legacy in the city of Louisville in Denton County. R.L. and his family has been in Denton County all their lives and they've done great things with Denton County. He served on United Way Board, he served on, served Denton, served in Rotary. And I was honored to receive the award in his honor. But I just want to thank Brenda and, and Trey and Guy for loaning us their daddy for all these, and husband for all these years because R.L. was a special person in the city of Louisville, Denton County. They've since moved to Denton County. I mean Denton, Brenda and Trey and Guy. So thanks, Brenda, if you're listening, Trey and Guy. Appreciate you guys and I love you.
Well, it was great and so fitting, Commissioner, that you received that award. Y'all, y'all I know you loved R.L. and R.L. loved you and y'all were in Rotary together all, you know, for so many decades. And I, I think, I think he would be very proud. I know he was proud of you.
And as I was him when he died.
And you were proud of him, but I know he'd be proud that you received that, that award in his great memory.
And she always downplays everything, so congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Bobby, I'm glad you mentioned it, but I had it as the first thing on my list to announce.
Oh, good.
So, and I did want to, over the weekend, it was in Louisville and it was a wonderful senior lady, I believe she was 100 years old, who does a senior sing-along in Louisville. And it showed 40 or 50 seniors. She would play the piano and they would sing along and it was so neat. I need to get her name and I know you'd like to, to meet her. It was, it was fantastic. And Commissioner Williams, we have another state champion out of Precinct Four and that would be the Boyd Yellow Jackets. I have to tell you, that's the only time I've ever been in favor of stinging insects, but they did win their first state championship in, I think, several years. So congratulations to them. In the meantime, we've got Juneteenth celebrations all over the county. In Denton, we're gonna have a senior picnic on the 16th. On the 16th and 17th will be the official Juneteenth celebration. And then on the 22nd, the world's largest swim lesson day is gonna be taking place. I think that's quite a unique event. So everybody who can't swim.
I will be there.
Can show, you will be there?
I can too, I will.
I don't want to.
And then they've got a forever family fishing day that will take place on June 24th. So lots going on in Denton. In Roanoke, they have their Farmers Market going the 3rd, 10th, 17th, and 24th of June, 8 to noon on Oak Street. And then in Southlake, they're having what sounds like a lot of fun and that's the Texas Ice Cream Truck Social. So all of us who love ice cream can just make it right out there to Southlake. Thank you so much for everything that everybody's doing to help remember Juneteenth. That's a very important holiday. It is celebrated nationally now, even though it really began in Texas. I watched a great documentary this week on the History Channel about Lincoln and it points out exactly how all of that came about and it was really great. And so happy Juneteenth to everybody who'd be celebrating that. Thank you, Judge.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. I had a, a long list of activities I mentioned and y'all took them all, so I think that's great. So I'll talk about there not being court meetings. How about we do that? That's, that's the most popular item around here. So the Tuesday, the, we will have no court next Tuesday as it follows a national holiday. So we will have no court on June the 20th and July the 4th and July 18th. Just want to go ahead and just mention those dates so everybody can make note accordingly. All right. Let's go to item 15 A. This is Texas Governor Code 551074581, personnel matters affecting the county advisory body, closing deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a member of the advisory body to with us. This is for the MHMR Board of Trustees and it is 9:55 and we are exec, yes, yes, sir. Yep.
I think it's a pretty big deal for us as far as Denton County.
Yes, I will be happy to. This is, um, this is great news. You know, all of us serve on different boards and committees across the county and the state. And Commissioner Mitchell was at a meeting with the North Central Texas Council of Governments and got a briefing the other day. You know, the census, although it is done every 10 years, that doesn't just happen every 10 years. It is a constant daily process whereby our North Central Texas Council of Governments in collaboration with the US Census Bureau keeps track of new building permits, new lots that are being built and subdivided and, and buildings constructed. And they announced, they were keeping track of the latest and greatest census. And so they did make an announcement. I'm glad Commissioner Mitchell came back and let us know about that. That Denton County has passed the 1 million milestone. She, they have passed that. So we're very excited to celebrate that, that momentous day in the life of the county. So thank you for, thank you for mentioning that.
Judge, you know how you used to say 82 people a day moved to Denton County?
Yes.
I see that it's up to 86 people a day.
Yes.
So they're bringing kids.
They're bringing more. They're bringing more. They know what we know. That Denton County is a great place to, to, to live. So, all right, and it is 9:57 now and we are in executive session. Thank you.